Do we have a call on to SUGA?
Yes, I believe we do.
Okay, thank you. Called a meeting to order, five thirty-three, June the ninth. Uh, with that, if we could do a roll call, please.
Alderman Boyd. Alderman Crone. Commissioner Banton.
Present.
Commissioner Boas.
Present.
Commissioner Bradley.
Present.
Commissioner Peoples.
Present.
Commissioner Goodman.
Diane.
Commissioner Pepper.
Present.
Commissioner Weber.
Present.
He said present.
Chair Strader.
Present.
And we have a call on with eight.
Thank you, Michelle. Uh, hopefully, everybody has had opportunity to either receive the package or see the information on the notes. Uh, we have a fairly brief, our condensed meeting tonight. Uh, there are three items on. The first business is the approval of minutes for May fifth. Uh, if there are no changes, I'm in a proof, uh, 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 I would accept the motion to approve the minutes.
Move to approve, Banton.
Second, Boas.
It's been moved by Commissioner Banton, second by Commissioner Boas. Please call for vote.
Alderman Boyd. Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
That's Jane.
Commissioner Pepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Yes.
Uh, Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes with seven presidents, I mean, voting aye and one abstentions.
Okay, thank you very much, Michelle. Uh, with that, uh, we have mentioned three items. One is a chapter ninety-nine. Uh, Jonathan will be doing the first two presentations, and then Alexa will be following that up, as I have noted. Uh, with that, Jonathan, I'll let you go ahead and begin your presentation. Uh, for those that are new to the meeting, what we will do is we'll hear the presentation. Uh, at that time, I'll call on a representative from that particular issue to, to provide any, uh, secondary comments, and then we'll go through a, uh, roll call of questions by the committee. Uh, and at that time, we'll entertain a motion or decide what the action is at that point. Uh, so Jonathan, you are up.
Hi, good evening, planning commissioners, and good evening, Chair. This evening, I, Jonathan Roper, senior planner with the Planning and Urban Design Agency, will present two petitions for the commission's review. Uh, the first request is a chapter ninety-nine blighting study and redevelopment plan for the properties addressed as thirty-eight thirteen through thirty-eight fifty-three Garfield Avenue, um, in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood. It consists of two parcels there. The LRA, LCR A blighting study and redevelopment plan has provided to you and your, um, commission packets as well. The petitioner seeks to reuse an existing industrial building for food manufacturing and processing. The site consists of one contiguous, uh, building that spans two parcels, and that building is currently is in multiple, I guess, tenant spaces, but expands two parcels as one building. Uh, the properties, oh, I'm sorry, to, can you go to the next slide? Thank you. Uh, the properties are zoned for the J Industrial, um, and food manufacturing would be a permitted use under the J zoning district, and the sloop, as you see on the screen, um, calls for a business industrial preservation area, which is intended for industrial and non-retail commercial uses. The food manufacturing would conform to this sloop category. Next slide, please. And next, we're going to take a look at the surrounding land uses, and we're going to begin, um, at number one, which is highlighted in yellow there, and which will start at the site entrance, and then we'll go around clockwise. This is the site, uh, the, the entrance from Garfield. Um, next slide, please. This is immediate south of the, of the site, so the building, um, the subject site is on the left side. To the right is the southern, um, the property to the south, which is the Aldo Salvage Yard. Next slide, please. This is west and northwest of the site. That has a few businesses, you can see in the red brick buildings there, uh, which border the site, and a vacant, uh, grassy area to the north there. Next slide, please. The northeast area of the site has, um, on the right side of the street, there's Rumple Park, and also residential, um, uses, um, as well. And next slide, please. The southeast of the site is a church, and across the street from the church are more residential properties. Next slide, please. And staff has reviewed the blighting study and redevelopment area against the sloop. A, uh, sloop designation for, um, the business industrial preservation area, and at this time, uh, staff is recommending approval, um, of this, this request. And open for any questions or comments the petitioner, or the commission may have at this time. And also, the petitioner's representative is on the line right now.
Thank you, Jonathan. Firstly, I would invite Alderwoman Evans, if, uh, if you have anything to offer, and then you can introduce who the representative is for this project, if you have that in front of you. You, um...
Okay, yeah, I just, I'm new at me. Um, I'm sorry, I'm new at this, okay, so bear with me.
Aye, yes, aye. Welcome, welcome to commission, we appreciate you.
Yes, um, so, I'm sorry, what is it that you asked of me?
I was asking if there's any comments you want to give on the project, or if you want to, Jonathan, if you want to introduce who's representing the project to give them a chance to speak to it.
Uh, yes, um, I believe Jeff Toddlebin is on, is Jeff here?
Yes, I can hear him.
Okay, yes, um, I, I am in favor of this, this, uh, project. I took a tour, uh, with him the other day, and I'm excited. So, I'm, I'm looking forward to everything that, uh, um, his, um, Confluence Food Group intends to bring to my ward.
Okay. Well, Jeff, you heard the presentation, if you, if there's anything you want to add to it, Jonathan Davis?
No, I just wanted to provide some context. Uh, Confluence Food Group owns, uh, Dogtown Pizza, which is probably what you're more familiar with from a, from a usage standpoint, and hopefully, it's in your freezer. But, uh, we, um, we started off on the small business incubator on Wash Avenue behind Fox Theater about ten or twelve years ago. Uh, we outgrew that. Uh, we moved into this building that we're at now on North Broadway in Baden, which was the old Arcabasso, uh, salad dressing company. They moved out to Hazelwood, and we bought their building ten years ago. We're at twenty-three thousand square feet right now. Um, Dogtown Pizza's growth is limited by our facility. We need more space, we need more freezer space. It's really hard to get, uh, refrigerated and frozen food storage. We also, uh, along the way when we were growing, we partnered with our food distribution company, Fox River Dairy. Fox River Dairy is about a hundred-year-old company that has trucks that deliver local goods that are manufactured here in St. Louis, like Fazio's Ravioli, Chocolate Chocolate Chocolate, Dogtown Pizza, all the local farms that make cheese. They're the company that gets that into your deer birds and schnooks. And they can't expand because they, they've grown with the pandemic, you know, grocery's been booming, and the focus has been on locally manufactured, uh, goods getting to the grocery shelves. So, we formed Confluence Food Group to hold Dogtown Pizza and Fox River Dairy, but also, also to invest in other local food entrepreneurs and kind of give them access to manufacturing and distribution knowledge that we built up. Um, one of those that we, um, invested in last year and took a minority investment was a company called Core &amp; Mind, which is a woman-owned company that makes a vegan, uh, cheese sauce that's doing really well. So, long story short, we're food people. Dogtown Pizza's kind of what got us into this, uh, you know, building that we're in now, and we just need the space to grow. We've had a really hard time finding a hundred thousand to support our building. We really need eighty thousand, it's probably a little bigger than we need. But we've had a really hard time finding a building in the city. Um, you know, uh, Confluence is owned by seven individuals, five of them live in the city of St. Louis, and are very passionate about remaining in the city. So, we're going to be, uh, moving jobs over from Baden, and we're going to be adding a lot of growth in jobs in here in the next four to five years, and we're really excited about the project. It was a pleasure to meet the Alderwoman and her team yesterday, and I'm really excited about the project. And hopefully, you know, making this area, the neighborhood, look a lot nicer, and cleaning up the building, and putting it back into use.
Very good. I am always glad to hear business wanting to be in the city. Uh, let's, uh, but I will now approach the, uh, commission for the questions. Uh, Commissioner Banton, any questions from you?
Uh, yes, so, this is in the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood, correct?
Correct.
And there is a neighborhood plan adapted in two thousand and one. Is there anything about this proposal that goes against the neighborhood plan?
My apologies for not putting that onto the staff report, but in the review of the Jeff Vanderloo neighborhood plan, uh, there is a master plan that covers most of the JBL neighborhood, but this particular area was not, uh, included in that master plan of the JBL neighborhood. So, in, in short, no.
Um, out of curiosity, what was the use for this building previously? I know it was manufacturing, but what were they?
It was, um, St. Louis Paper Company. I don't know exactly what they did, but it was St. Louis Paper. There, obviously, when you walk through the building, there was a lot of cutting of paper, and, uh, there's still some machinery in there that we have to dispose of if we go through with this. But, that's, as far as I can tell, that's the only company that was there, uh, before us.
Is there any known environmental contamination to the site that you know of?
No, there's no known, yeah, there's no known environmental contamination, though. We did have a phase one environmental done. They recommended, uh, some samples in phase two, which we're absolutely going to go forward with. Uh, it, it tied into, like, going all the way back to, like, the fifties and forties. There was a dry cleaning business somewhere on the property. Uh, there was also a possible, uh, storage tank for, or there was an auto repair shop there at one time, a car dealership at one time over the years. And, um, just, you know, common sense on the environmental, phase one, was to go get a phase two. So, uh, I, I don't think the seller's going to deny that. I had to ask for that phase two permission formally today. I expect the seller to grant it, and our phase two, uh, should be done here in June.
Great, well, uh, echo the comments, love seeing businesses located in the city, especially North City, and, uh, also love the reuse of existing buildings, so, um, absolutely fabulous, so.
Thank you.
More questions?
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Boas.
No additional questions. I echo all of, um, Commissioner Banton's comments, and absolutely love your pizza. Thanks very much for the, for the background.
Thanks.
Commissioner Bradley.
No questions, best of luck to you and Alderwoman Evans, and all the development in the fourth floor. Great project, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Peoples.
No question.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman.
No questions, great project, congratulations.
Well, thank you. Commissioner Pepper.
No question.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber.
No question.
See how easy that one was for you? Uh, this, this one, as, anytime you talk about food, I think you got people smiling, and it's, Dogtown Food Group and Pizza, I think, has a good reputation of its own.
Okay.
Uh, not in my freezer, but doesn't mean it wouldn't, shouldn't be. Uh, at this point, I would entertain the motion of, uh, Jonathan wants to give us the recap of what we're at, what's being asked.
We're asking, PDA finds that the plan is in conformance of the strategic, um, land use designation for the business industrial planning area, um, business industrial preservation area, and we're recommending approval for the, um, for the proposed blighting study and redevelopment plan at this time.
I'll entertain a motion. Who moved and who seconded, I mean?
Uh, Chris, you're, we have a move.
I'll take the second.
Okay, Commissioner Weber's moved, uh, Commissioner Bradley's seconded. Call for vote.
Alderman Boyd. Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boas.
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley.
Aye.
Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pepper.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Chair Strader.
Aye.
And the motion passes with our president voting aye.
Thank you very much. And with that one, Jonathan, you are back up with, uh, twenty-one resolution, uh, nineteen dash twenty-one.
Well, thank you, Chairman. Uh, the second request this evening is a rezoning application for the properties addressed as forty-one hundred through forty-six, forty-one forty-six Clayton Avenue, and forty-one oh one through forty-one twenty-three Sheropee Avenue in the Central West Bend neighborhood. It's also a part of the Cortex West, um, three-five-three redevelopment area as well. The petitioner seeks to consolidate eleven vacant parcels and rezone for a three-building lib-work-play development. That is part of the vision of the Cortex West three-fifty-three redevelopment area. And here are the proposed, um, site plan, and we're going to show you renderings that the developer wishes to share with you. Uh, there are three buildings, um, for the overall development. Uh, go to the next slide, please. At the corner of Sarah and Clayton, um, this would be the site's northeast corner. There is a residential mixed-use building with ground floor retail. Uh, next building, play, or slide, thank you. The second, um, building is just south of there, along, uh, Sarah, and it calls for a, and also, just to note, what's kind of cut out is Highway sixty-four forty, so it'll butt that as well. Um, this one is the office commercial and, uh, research building. And nothing between those two is a, um, amenities for the, uh, development. Next slide, oh, actually, one back, please. And along in the distance, just to the west of these buildings, is a, uh, is a parking structure as well to service the site. Also, just a point of interest and note, um, the city, along with a lot of the partners, Greenway have been working with, um, their newest, um, Greenway, the Brick Line, which, an extension of the Brick Line, the Tower Grove Connector, is running, um, along, it runs south along Sarah, um, into the Forest Park Southeast neighborhood. So, this, in this particular site, along the eastern side, along Sarah, there would be this, um, different bike improvements that are planned with, um, the city and our city's partners with GRG. Slide, please. Uh, currently, the sloop calls for a specialty mixed-use area, and the specialty mixed-use area is intended for those unique uses that are to be reserved or developed. Next slide, please. And it is currently zoned J Industrial. Um, the rezoning of J Industrial to H Commercial area, uh, would, on one hand, the J District does not allow for residential, so rezoning it to H would allow for residential, as well as H would prohibit more of those really intensive, uh, industrial-type uses from, uh, the area. Go to the next slide, please. Here is an aerial of the site, just to give kind of a higher perspective. Where we see, um, Highway sixty-four forty to the south, uh, the larger multi-story white building there is part of Cortex, BJC at the Commons, so just give you a little context on that. And next, uh, slide, we will take you to a tour of the site and the surrounding uses as well, going in a clockwise manner. We start at the northeast area of the site, where we, we're looking at, um, the current conditions, which is a vacant, um, site. Next slide, please. Just the immediate, uh, east of there is a, um, one of the buildings upon a Cortex as well. Next slide, please. The view from Sheropee is, um, so you're on Sheropee looking north. This is, uh, part of the subject site, and you can see that the site is vacant today. Next slide, please. To the southwest of the site is manufacturing, including, uh, Renoko, the coffee manufacturer. Uh, next slide, please. And if you're on the north side of the site, on Clayton Avenue, looking west, you have both, uh, Renoko Coffee and also BJC at the Commons, which is, of course, part of Cortex as well. Slide, please. And, um, and receiving, uh, the letter from the zoning administrator, um, she noted that this, the rezoning of this site would achieve, um, it would allow for new office, new residential units, and would radicalize and underutilize piece of property as the existing site sits vacant. Um, PDA staff does recommend, um, recommend of approval for this as it does comply with, uh, what we have in the sloop, as well as the Cortex three-five-three redevelopment, uh, plan. And at this time, um, I'm open for any questions or comments the commission may have. Also, the, uh, petitioner's representative is on the line at this time to answer questions or comments.
And thank you, Jonathan. Do you want to introduce the petitioner? I allow them, uh, opportunity to fill in any gaps, or give us a two-minute, uh, that we may not have addressed, addressed.
Thank you, sir. It's Rob Lockner. He's, um, with KDG, um, and he's there on the line to answer any questions that you may have.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Rob, is there anything you want to give before we go to commissioners' questions?
Uh, I don't think so. I just want to thank you all for, uh, uh, allowing us to, uh, have the rezoning heard, and, uh, just want you to know that, that, that we feel this is the highest and best use for the ground. We've owned it for a little over five years now, um, and, um, we feel like, uh, we've got good traction on the residential side, as well as potential, uh, office users. So, we look forward to your favorable, favorable, uh, approval. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you. Uh, did see Alderman Boyd on the line, uh, any questions, Alderman Boyd?
Thank you, Mr. Jonathan, no question.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Banton.
Uh, yeah, a couple of questions. So, uh, same questions as before, um, it, it seems to comply with the redevelopment plan. Anything in the Cortex master plan? I saw that at one point, there was discussion of, um, a bike right-of-way or some sort of greenway along Clayton. Is that still in consideration? Does this plan consider this at all? Is that even on the right side of the street?
Sure.
Well, yeah, um, I'm sorry, uh, Jonathan, would you like to answer that?
Uh, you, well, you can go right ahead.
Oh, okay. Um, uh, thank you for the question. We are working with Cortex, uh, and, and they are working with both Wash U, Arch to Park, and other stakeholders as it relates to the Sarah Street Connector that, uh, Jonathan showed. Uh, we will be doing, uh, bike lanes as part of that. Um, and we, uh, have not, uh, been involved with any discussions that relate to bike lanes going east and west on Clayton.
Are there any bike-specific amenities in going in either one of these buildings that are being considered?
Uh, well, we, we do have commercial space on the first floor, so if there was ever, you know, certainly, if there was ever a bike shop of any kind that, uh, wanted to go in there, we would, we would happily welcome them. But we do have bike facilities for our residents and our office tenants that would, uh, be allowed, be able to both service their bikes and store them.
Uh, in terms of the phasing, how is that going to work when the garage, residential, and office?
So, for the phasing, um, we are leading with the residential, uh, building, and that, we hope to start, um, to break ground on that yet this year. Uh, and assuming that some of these, uh, tenants that we're talking to currently on the office building, um, commit to us, we would start construction on the, on the office building as well. Um, we hope to have both of them going at the same time. But, uh, initially, uh, if for some reason that doesn't happen, we would surface, uh, surface park, uh, the, the residential building until such time as we build the office building. That would then, uh, cause us to build the parking structure.
Got it. Um, and looking at your site plan, uh, it looks like the roundabout at the end of Sarpee Avenue right there, um, I don't know if this is just for graphics to make it look good, but are you redoing that with some sort of new pavement? And is that cut-through street to Clayton, is that going to be a public street, or is that a private, new private drive?
Uh, yeah, that would, that would be, um, and actually, the site plan's changed slightly. Uh, it, it, it will be an entrance into, uh, the parking structure, basically, and it's not a public street. It's just, uh, for access in and out of the parking structure.
So, will it cut through all the way to Clayton anymore, or is that, no?
No, it will not. It doesn't currently either.
Got it. Okay, um, any, uh, affordable, affordable apartments as part of the multifamily portion?
Yes, we are, uh, uh, doing some affordable units for the apartment building. I can't, I, I don't, I don't know the specifics of that. That's not kind of my, uh, part of the, um, of the team, my responsibility, but, uh, yes, we are doing that.
Got it, okay. And, um, last question, um, it's clarified, did you say that you were doing, um, like, the bike lane and street improvements to Sarah as part of this project? Or is that sort of in conjunction with the city or Trailnet, or whoever's doing that, that project?
We're in the process of figuring that out, actually, but the intention would be we would do it with part of this, as part of this project.
Good. Great, no further questions, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Banton. Commissioner Boas. Commissioner Boas, any questions? Commissioner Bradley, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Peoples.
No questions, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman.
No question.
Thank you. Commissioner Pepper.
Yeah, thanks. Um, it's good to meet you, Mr. Lockner. Uh, we're excited about this project, um, and, uh, thank you for, uh, being here today. Initially, are you seeking incentives for this project?
Uh, the, I, uh, the project is in the existing, uh, TIP district for Cortex, and I believe Cortex is pursuing activation of this RPA.
Which would require approval by the TIP commission, correct?
That's correct, yes.
Great.
I think, I think that's actually in July.
And have you spoken, uh, to Alderwoman Peel about this?
Uh, people with both Cortex, as well as our president, have been in communication with her, yes.
But, but you have not?
Me personally, no, sir, I have not.
Um, frankly, I, I feel it's a little premature, um, to approve this when it's not likely to get before the board, um, or passed through the board during the summer session. Um, and the viability of the project without incentives is unclear. Um, so, given all that, I, I just want to respectfully comment that, uh, approving this at this point, not a comment on the project in general, which we are excited about, but approving it at this point feels premature.
Okay. Is that your final, or is it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Uh, Commissioner Weber.
I have no question.
Okay. Uh, and at this point, I have no questions either. Uh, I would, Jonathan, would you go ahead and recap the, the ask of the commission? I would, Jonathan, would you go ahead and recap the ask of the commission?
Yes, Chair, thank you. The ask is to consider the rezoning, the proposed rezoning from J to H for the, this redevelopment area. Rezoning, I'm thinking.
All right. Commissioner Dr. Pepper has raised, but however, I'll entertain any of the commissioners' comments and desires at this point.
I make a motion, we approve this re-
I second Commissioner Weber.
Okay. I've had a call for-
Would we have some discussion?
Call for discussion. Commissioner Pepper?
Yes.
Could we clarify?
Right now, we have a motion on the floor and a call for questions. I'll allow-
Could we clarify?
Commissioner Pepper, the call for-
Earl, could you clarify who moved and seconded because we couldn't hear?
Oh, oh, sorry. The second was by Commissioner Weber. The move was by Commissioner Goodman.
And, Mr. Chairman, I have a question after Commissioner's topic.
Very good, Commissioner Weber. Commissioner Pepper?
I was just going to offer that while I understand how this might be the highest and best use for the ground from the perspective of the developer, it's not entirely true. And it may be the case that it's the highest and best use for the ground from the purpose of the city, but that is less fair to me. And the rationale being that this project could also be a good fit elsewhere in the city. And I'm not saying that this is not an intent in any way to kill this project or to shut anything down. It is merely a comment that it merits further discussion with facility development agencies as we finalize negotiations over the incentives and actually really big game negotiation.
Okay. Thank you for your comment, keeping in mind that we are not, as a planning commission, involved in incentive conversation as it is.
Absolutely. I was offering a comment on the highest and best use.
Right. No, I completely understand, just for others wanting to know that tonight, our, Commissioner Weber had a comment, a question?
Yeah, I guess, Commissioner Pepper, are you speaking personally or are you speaking as a representative of the mayor's office?
I'm speaking as a representative of the mayor's office.
So that leads me to believe that the mayor's office doesn't want to approve this. Is that true?
At this point, we are not ready to approve it. We feel it is premature.
Okay. The other question I have is, I have no idea how much or what the incentives are, so I can't really speak to that. Can someone tell us?
They have requested 14 million.
Okay. Is that within the TIP that goes with Cortex?
That's right.
Okay. So has someone approved that prior?
But it would require subsequent approval to amend the redevelopment agreement for this project.
Okay.
Architect Commission.
That's all I got.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Weber. And to clarify for others, as you may understand, the RPA has to be approved by the plant, by the TIP Commission in this case, if I'm speaking correctly at this point. The concern that I do have is that it seems to be some conversation about not having a conversation with the alderperson in that ward at this point. It's only half-dead or half-not, I'm not quite sure how that's operated. And I do make the point that it will not make, it won't go before the board either before the end of summer. Can you address that, Jonathan, appropriately for you or Don?
I'm sorry, can you clarify the question?
Just the timing of this process, because I'm not responding to the mayor's concerns, I'm responding to the commission's concerns.
I believe in-
The, the commission has 45 days to review a petition and after that time, if the 45 days expires, then it can be introduced at the Board of Aldermen without the commission's review. So, you know, I think at that point, the 45 days for this petition would be up on July 5th, which is two days before the next planning commission meeting. And at that point, it could be introduced by, by the alderwoman.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Just real quick, I just want to acknowledge, I see, Ms. Burton, I do see your hand and I will acknowledge you in a moment, who was, I heard, I think that was Mr. Commissioner Weber.
Yeah. I don't know, someone will help me with Robert's rules, but there seems to be some interest that maybe we should delay this vote for a little bit. And I'm wondering if the person who made the motion would entertain a motion to delay the vote for, until our next meeting.
You are correct, that would be the call next, but I wanted to be sure all questions were answered first.
Okay.
And Don, I think you were, you were, I'm not sure, just nod your head or yes or no. Yes, he has, Don has comments.
He does have comments or doesn't have comments?
He does. He's been, he's a little technically challenged today. He's working for- so I think Don's calling in, because we had him earlier on the phone.
I think he is still on the phone. Don, if you want, I can call you and I can put you on speakerphone.
Yeah, because he's, he's muted.
Yeah.
There with this moment, some of the challenges of Zoom and hopefully we start looking at possibly September, maybe.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Burton.
I can't answer the question in regard to this making it through the legislative session before they go on the summer break.
Please do, go ahead.
If the Planning Commission were to make a favorable recommendation this evening and the board bill is introduced on Thursday, June 17th, the board isn't meeting on the 18th because of the holidays, there would be just enough time for it to be published and noticed for the July 6, 2021 HUD committee meeting that Alderman Boyd has already agreed to. It could then have a second reading. I believe the board is in session through Friday, July 16th, so on the 16th, it would have to be, the rule suspended with a perfection and if they're reading. So there is enough time, but it's a very, very tight schedule.
That's certainly true, but there is not enough time for the actual TIP redevelopment agreement to be approved by the Board of Aldermen. And that's why the delay is already built in. And we actually notified Cortex, I apologize that the notice didn't make it to you, Rob, I don't have your contact information, but we notified Cortex in advance and they understand that this is not further delay their project, because their project has already been delayed by the TIP Commission meeting being pushed back to July and it is not possible given the 14-day notice requirement and the various requirements of the Board of Aldermen to process to pass that TIP incentive out of the board in the summer session. So we do not believe that this is further delay of the project.
Commissioner Pepper, I'm going to ask that you have to be recognized next time you're going to respond to something. Okay, I'd appreciate the calls.
Earl, Don is on speakerphone now.
Okay, go ahead, Don.
Sorry, I have two pieces of technology that are conflicting with each other, but good evening. One of the things that we always have is the option to be, understanding that we've heard it, we've discussed it tonight, but to table the decision to another time. And that could be by a special meeting at any, at any time or regular meeting, if so happens or if that way. And then if we're doing that, the next meeting doesn't necessarily mean that to be long drawn out, because we've had the discussion tonight. But a way to have more of the ducks fall into a row, back into a row on my, on that, is to table.
Okay. What Don was saying, for those who may not have heard it, we've heard the presentation and at this point, it could be tabled to allow everything to go in order as typical would be done. And that essentially requires that the commissioner made the motion, we rescind it, and we have a motion to table discussion, so when it comes back to the committee, it's simply a vote at that point of the information that's been presented with everything in point and any questions, all medic support, it would have been at that point. So if, if the commissioner chooses to rescind their, their motion, we will take it off the table. If not, I'm going to call for a vote.
I have a question. Mr. Jonathan?
Commissioner Boyd?
Okay, notwithstanding politics, I just want to be clear. So is this project tied to the TIP that's being renegotiated? I, I chanted in late, so I apologize that I was having TIP difficulties as well. Is this tied to the TIP that's being renegotiated and that's been topped out in the paper? Let me ask that to Noel.
Yeah, I'm happy to respond.
Yes, please do. And I see, I see the hand of both Ms. Burton and Rob, I'll give both to you after Commissioner Pepper responds.
I confess, I haven't been following what's been public in the papers, but we are just starting negotiations over the amendment to the redevelopment agreement and the, the TIP incentive that could be attached to this project.
Okay. So I just want to be, so you guys are in negotiations with that right now, even-
I'm clearly barely started.
Oh, this is a different?
No, 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 this is the project, but that's why it's so premature.
Okay, so the alderperson at the ward, which is, I'm thinking it's that, is that correct?
That's right.
Then the alderperson has to sponsor the legislation in order for the zoning to be covered up, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. So I heard your comment about your, the mayor's office have the opinion that this is not best use for this land.
No, 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 I'm just saying that we haven't come to that conclusion. I was not saying that it is or it's not. The whole concern with this is just that it's too early. They just put on the agenda when the TIP Commission meeting was earlier and when there was actually an expectation that this could all move through the summer session. That's no longer the case. So in case the project changes, in case there are substantial changes, we just think this is all too early and would rather do it all once we're ready to move forward.
Okay. And I'm, so I'm a landlord of property and I guess I would be a little offended if somebody told me that that wasn't the best use of my property if it fits the landscape of other properties in this area. What I don't want to get to is whether the Planning Commission is going to be a rubber stamp, so if the mayor's office say, hey, we're against this project, we're coming, so please have a section. Of course, commissioners are appointed by the committee, okay? But I don't want getting into all of that mucky stuff. You know, either this project that's viable, it's a zoning, because if you zone this and the project never moves forward, it still has a zoning for it and somebody else may come up and say, you know, may get use of it. If we pass this at the Planning Commission, it doesn't really interrupt the TIP Commission the facts to do, right?
That is correct. Thing is that our fundamental point is actually about zoning. It is that we are interested, as we have spoken frequently about, in pushing development north and in repurposing or relocating, in particular, office and residential and commercial development north.
And I support-
So the highest and best use of the land can't only be considered with respect to this parcel itself. It actually has to come from a holistic analysis of the highest and best use of the city's land altogether.
Correct. You know, and I certainly respect that and I get that, because I have landed I7 in Goodfellas since 2005, that it's been overlooked for over 15 years. So I get that. I guess that we should move and shift developers to want to look at the goal line that exists here. I get that. But when, when developers have spent a lot of money working on a project and sometimes for years, and then we just grind it to a near halt, I'm not sure that's fair. And I don't think that we would be able to force developers to just go where we want to go or build what we want to per se. You know, I mean, certainly we work together for a common good, but I'm just uneasy about this.
All right.
Right now.
Okay. Thank you, Alderman Boyd. Thank you, Commissioner Pepper. I believe Ms. Burton had her hand and Rob had his hand. I'll entertain both of those conversations because we still have a motion on the floor at this point. Rob? You had your hand up, was there any comment on?
Yes, thank you. Just, I acknowledge what Mr. Pepper is saying about the TIP Commission meeting being delayed and I was just, you know, we continued on with the rezoning application simply because we felt it was somewhat perfunctory and also it was to Mr. Boyd's point, Alderman Boyd's point, it is within keeping of the, the master plan for Cortex and the mixed use desired by the city. So we were just hoping that, you know, we, we just, we could get the rezoning so that we would eventually be allowed, whenever the dust settles on the TIP, to move forward with the mixed, the mixed use building which has the residential in it. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Weber?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to remind you that I have, I want to make that motion to add to the original motion, if the motioner will accept that, or could you explain to me how we would go about favoring this?
Yes, I will. First, I believe it was Commissioner Goodman that made the motion, am I correct?
Yes, I made the motion and I have no intentions of withdrawing my motion.
Very good. Okay, at that point, then is there a second? Which I believe you, you seconded, Commissioner Weber.
I did.
Are you keeping your second on the table?
Yes, and so Commissioner Goodman, you want to entertain my additional motion?
I'm not sure what your additional motion is.
My additional motion is to, is to delay the vote until our next meeting.
No, I stick with my original motion.
Okay, I'll stick with my suggestion, Mr. Chair.
Okay, with that, it has been approved, it has been moved and seconded. Call for vote.
Call to the floor.
Hi.
Commissioner Benson?
Aye.
Commissioner Boas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bradley?
No.
Commissioner Peoples?
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman?
Aye.
Commissioner Pepper?
No.
Mr. Weber?
Aye.
Chair Strader?
Aye.
And the motion passes at six forty, aye and two no's.
Very good. So simply as for us, it has allowed this property to be rezoned. It still has all its other political path that it still must take and the alderwomen still must present it, the HUD still must hear it, the TIP still must approve it. We just simply changed the zoning designation for that future property under no political impression, which I appreciate Alderman Boyd saying that, that this is not to rubber stamp it, simply to look at a lot of land and says, does it qualify for the zoning that is requested, the change in zoning? Beyond that, we are into the third item on the agenda, which is Alexa, I believe.
Yes, it is me. Good evening, Planning Commission members and chair. I would like to introduce, oh, I would like to introduce to you the North Central Vision Action Plan we have received for review and to consider for adoption. This evening, at a future, to consider adoption for a future date. This evening, we are requesting for the Planning Commission to host a public hearing at a later date and in the community. Although this request is not mandatory, we wanted to let you know of this upcoming topical plan review coming down the pipeline. And just to give you a bit more background about this topical plan, the North Central Vision Action Plan spearheaded by the Deaconess Foundation in partnership with United Church- in partnership with United Church of Christ Church Building and Loan Fund and other stakeholders encompasses the Van de Vender and Covenant Blue Grand Center Neighborhoods. The goal of this plan is to guide the community into a whole, healthy and vibrant community over the next twenty years. And today, at this meeting, we want to go over how the consultant arrived at the creation of this plan. At the public hearing, and again, that will be set at a future date, we will go over the plan's strategies, recommendations, and public feedback on the document. Staff is also in the process of reviewing the plan documents and will provide our feedback to the consultant group. Now, I'd like to introduce you to Tim Brien of H3 Studios, who is the principal consultant on this project and will illustrate the planning process and who was involved. And I believe he's going to share a screen if it comes in.
Yes, thank you, Alexa.
And I believe tenure should be able to share enough.
Okay, great, we just hold the call. All right, can you all see that in full screen mode?
Yes.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity, um, to speak with you all tonight. Um, as Alexa mentioned, um, we'd like to go over a brief presentation that covers, um, the, the project initiation and objectives, um, and then a summary of the planning process and the, and community participation uh, that, that was, um, that was facilitated during, uh, this process, and then, uh, answer any, uh, questions that you all may have on that. So, as Alexa was beginning to mention, um, the North Central Community Vision Action Plan is a partnership between, uh, the Deaconess Foundation, um, the United Church of Christ Church Building and Loan Fund, that those were the two funding partners, and the North Central Community. Um, this, this process began, uh, in two thousand and nineteen, actually, before we were brought on as the new planning consultant, um, when a consortium of residents approached, approached the Deaconess Foundation to discuss a partnership to update the original North Central Plan that was developed in the year two thousand. Um, and so this, these initial conversations, um, resulted in the formation of a, the, of a, a community steering committee. Um, and over twelve months of engagement through sort of the middle of two thousand and nineteen through the middle of two thousand and twenty, um, this, uh, the steering committee worked out how to proceed with the planning process, um, issued an RFP, a competitive RFP, um, and ultimately selected a team, um, with H3 Studio was the, the plan. Um, again, the, the key funding partners, as you see on the, um, on the, uh, right-hand side of the screen, include the Deaconess Foundation and the UCC Church Building and Loan Fund. Um, community partners who are part of the community steering committee included Grand Center Inc., um, AIM Development Group, the same with Housing Authorities, uh, the Place Enrichment Center, St. Anthony's, the Boys Catholic Church, the Baptist Church, Windowed National Housing, the Westfall Boxing, Lewis Place Association, Scruggs Memorial Community Church, and of course, the three older persons, uh, covering the planning area. Um, the Honorable Evans, uh, Honorable Todd, and Honorable Davis were also a part of this process. The project objective, um, as, as formulated and articulated by the Community Steering Committee, um, stated that the, the North Central Vision Action Plan seeks to create a community with stronger stakeholder relationships between residents, businesses, and community organizations, faith-based organizations, and government. A clear vision for redevelopment, which addresses the need for inclusive housing and economic development policies. A roadmap and timetable for the implementation of both short and long-term projects and policy needs that will improve the lives of residents and businesses in the plan footprint. Uh, the City of St. Louis's adoption of the revised North Central Plan and, uh, and informed and engaged, uh, neighborhoods, uh, prepared to influence policy changes, access local state and federal funding, and track private investment. Through, uh, through the planning process, um, there were three, uh, overarching principles of the plan that were identified and that the plan was formulated to, uh, to achieve. And that is equity at the center, um, asset-based revitalization, um, utilizing the community assets as really the, the beginning, uh, of the plan to build some strength, and holistic sustainability, incorporating triple bottom line sustainability through all recommendations. And as Alexa mentioned, we will go through those recommendations in their detail, uh, at the public hearing. Uh, the planning process, um, occurred over a seven-month, uh, roughly a seven-month period, which kicked off, um, in, uh, September of two thousand and twenty. Um, this, this planning process was, was somewhat, uh, somewhat challenged by, uh, the ongoing COVID-nineteen pandemic. Um, and so we had to remain, uh, we had to remain flexible in our, in our engagement methodology, um, to ensure that, uh, that the, the planning team and the residents were safe, but that we were also, um, providing, uh, you know, more than, more than ample and comprehensive opportunities for, uh, for residents and stakeholders to participate and, and offer their input. And, uh, in order to do that, we utilized, uh, five key engagement techniques, which I'll talk about, uh, more in, in just a moment. And this is all built around, um, kind of three principles for equitable community engagement, uh, inclusion, listening to the representative cross-section of community, accessibility, ensuring all members could access, um, the, and, and participating in the engagement, and transparency of sharing information, reporting back to the community, and demonstrating explicitly how their feedback was incorporated. The planning process was also governed in, in many respects by the City of St. Louis's requirements for, minimum, minimal requirements for neighborhood plans, uh, that was published, uh, on July first of last year. And even though this plan is being, um, is being, uh, presented for adoption as a topical plan, we wanted to ensure that, uh, to the extent possible, we were meeting the more stringent requirements of the neighborhood plan, uh, supplemental requirements for adoption, dealing with community engagement surveys, topical coverage of the plan, and local and regional implementation. So, in terms of the, um, starting with the community engagement requirement, um, through the process, uh, we conducted public meetings, we worked with steering committee and conducted a number of steering committee meetings. There were project newsletters, stakeholder interviews were conducted, and focus group meetings were also conducted. Uh, focused engagement included piggybacking on other events, um, celebration resource fairs, and some, uh, innovative engagement solutions, um, including, um, including, uh, a, a, some implementing all planning activities where residents actually were able to, hands-on, uh, make some small notification improvements in the community as part of the, uh, community engagement process. And then online and tech engagement included a project website, social media, um, interactive online tools, and, uh, keep ahead polling and interactive survey through, um, through virtual media platforms. Uh, there was also a, a community well-being survey that was conducted, um, per the city requirements. Um, this requires a ninety percent confidence level with a five percent or less margin of error. Uh, for the, for the total, uh, population, um, as, as, um, measured by the current census data, which unfortunately is the twenty-ten census data, um, the total population of the two neighborhoods is five thousand two hundred and forty-four. That requires a sample size of two hundred and fifty-nine survey respondents with a plus or minus ten percent, uh, demographic representation of the total study area. Um, we were, uh, were pleased to announce that we were able to exceed, um, the confidence level and margin of error requirements, um, with a sample size of two hundred and one respondents. Um, unfortunately, the demographic, uh, targets were not fully met, particularly as it, as it pertains to, um, white residents versus black residents. Um, you can see, uh, uh, in, in the lower right-hand corner, um, the, the study area in, in total is sixty-eight point nine-five percent black or African-American, twenty-four point two percent white. And as you can see, the, the, the survey responses were, were outside of that ten percent. But for American Indian and Alaska natives, Asian, um, Pacific Islander, and two or more races, um, we were able to meet those, those demographic targets. Um, we do believe that a lot of this is due to the fact that, uh, uh, the, the majority of the white residents in the study area, um, reside in Covenant Blue and Center Neighborhoods. Many of them are, uh, students or graduate students that live in apartments. And quite honestly, it was, it was unfortunate for the, the canvassing teams that were there to access those, those residents. Um, in terms of the topical coverage requirements, um, all of the primary topics, the business conditions, vision, language, zoning, housing, sustainability, connectivity, equity, economic development, safety, and implementation are addressed. Um, all but one of the secondary topics are addressed. The, the topic not addressed is homelessness. Um, and all, uh, but one of the focus area topics are also addressed in the plan. Uh, the one not addressed is waterfront recreation. And then finally, um, we, we made a, a very explicit point to, um, ensure that the recommendations in the plan were to the extent possible within this geographic area aligning with, um, the local and regional implementation alignment. Um, so in terms of adopted citywide plans, um, non-adopted citywide and regional plans, um, we, we demonstrated in the plan how each of the specific goals, objectives, and strategies is aligned with those broader recommendations. Um, and furthermore, uh, we, we've aligned with the, with the general mission recommendation with the three, um, citywide and regional organizations which are required. So, to look at, uh, an overview of the planning process timeline, again, we began the process in September of two thousand and twenty. Um, phase two comprised approximately the first two months of the project. Um, we conducted stakeholder and focus group meetings, um, from September through November. Uh, we had our first community kickoff event and implementing all planning, um, on September nineteenth. And the steering committee met for the first time as part of the planning process on September thirtieth. Um, we then met with the community at large, uh, in the first town hall meeting the following week on, uh, October sixth, which was done in conjunction with National Night Out. That was an in-person event at the Deaconess, uh, Center. And then we had our second steering committee meeting, um, dealing with, uh, vision and core values at the end of October, October eleventh. Um, we then, uh, took the recommendations and, and, and inputs in the steering committee to the Bronx Heart Community of the Second Communitywide Town Hall on November second. That was a hybrid event where we had both an in-person component at the Deaconess Center as well as a virtual Zoom event. Um, then moving into phase three, which was the community and neighborhood framework plan options. Those were developed in the month of November, uh, presented to the steering committee on December ninth with the goal of identifying a preferred option from three options that were presented. We did identify that preferred option with the committee. Um, that was developed over the remainder of December and January, and it was re-presented to them, uh, with, with revisions on, uh, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-one. That material was then taken out to the community at town hall meeting number three on February second. Um, and then the draft plan was developed during the month of February and it was presented to the steering committee, uh, at steering committee number five on, um, February twenty-fourth. And then, uh, did further development in the month of March, presented the draft plan, um, to the community uh, on, uh, March twenty-third, and then drafted the plan document, um, between March twenty-third and April twenty-third, when it was, uh, then distributed back out to the steering committee for their review period. Um, in that time period, we had, uh, an implementation work session with the client group on, on, uh, April thirtieth. The steering committee review period closed on May seventh. Uh, the planning team, uh, incorporated their comments, uh, between May seventh and May tenth. We distributed the plan and then the steering committee met on Wednesday, May twelfth, uh, to vote to forward the plan to the city for the adoption process. And that official handover occurred on Saturday, uh, May sixteenth at the plan celebration event and the official submission to the City of St. Louis. So, um, the, the steering committee, um, comprised of community representatives, uh, and stakeholders from various geographic areas of the neighborhood. Again, we met five times, essentially once in each project day. Um, it was a twenty-seven-member, uh, committee, and as I mentioned, they voted to essentially approve the North Central Plan for, for forwarding to the city, um, uh, and that, that occurred, um, uh, on, on May twelfth with the official submission. Eight, so twenty-seven individual participants. Um, we conducted, uh, through the process, six, um, individual stakeholder interviews and nine small focus group meetings. Um, those were basically, uh, focused on, on different topics. Uh, there were twenty-eight individual participants in those meetings. Um, the first round of stakeholder interviews and focus groups occurred between September twenty-first and November sixth. And then in February, uh, February second to February nineteenth, uh, we met with, um, City of St. Louis focus groups. The community well-being survey, um, was a survey that was administered, uh, in person or by phone, uh, through a canvassing team, um, that were, um, organized and, and facilitated by Action St. Louis, one of the community partners in the project. Uh, the survey consisted of a twenty-two multiple choice questions and three open-ended responses. Um, the survey activities began on September eighteenth, um, and actually continued, uh, through April thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-one, so really through the entire duration of the planning, uh, process. And there were two hundred and eighty-one total survey respondents. Um, there were six, uh, neighborhood-wide meetings and events, uh, four town hall meetings, um, which were again, a mix of both in-person as well as in-person and virtual engagement. Um, there was a community kickoff and implementing all planning event in September of two thousand and twenty, and then the plan celebration event, uh, in person on May fifteenth. And through those meetings, there were a hundred and forty-one unique attendees in both the in-person, uh, forum and the virtual forums. And then finally, there was a variety of, um, website online and supplemental outreach tools that were utilized. Um, the, the, the project website, um, was really where all of the, uh, information was posted and there were a number of interactive feedback tools on that website. Um, there was door-to-door neighborhood canvassing conducted by Action St. Louis. Um, part of that canvassing involved, um, doing four rounds of door hangers, um, delivered to every address in the planning area at key points of the project. Uh, one of our team members, uh, Vector Communications, developed the project's fact sheet and, and outreach postcards, um, which were mailed to every address, um, in four rounds ahead of the, um, ahead of the public forums. There were, uh, yard signs that were developed and put out, signage boards, posters in commercial areas in the round, senior institutions. Um, two rounds of newsletters, a fall newsletter and a spring newsletter, were mailed to every address in the planning area. Um, there were ongoing social media posts throughout the project, and then, um, two rounds of press releases. The website, uh, hosted, um, two hundred, uh, two thousand five hundred and ninety-five unique website visitors throughout the process. Um, and there were two thousand one hundred and seventy-nine mailings, uh, and that was, again, newsletters, door hangers, and mailed postcards, um, two rounds of newsletters, four rounds of door hangers, and four rounds of mailed postcards throughout the project. And throughout all of this, um, community engagement, we were really, um, soliciting and cataloging, um, different categories using a SOAR analysis methodology, so strengths, opportunities, aspirations, and results. And the, the, the categories that emerged through this process, um, included community camaraderie, neighborhood amenities, growth, connection with officials, housing, community building, business development, and youth. And these, uh, these categories of input and the specific points of input were used as the foundation for the team to work with the planning, uh, the, the steering committee and the, and the neighborhood as a whole, uh, to develop the vision, core values, and goals of the plan, uh, which we will be discussing next time at the, at the public hearing. So, um, in, in summary, the community participation, if we sort of look at the raw numbers, um, we had two hundred and eighty-one households respond to the community well-being surveys that were ninety percent confidence level, uh, four point seven-nine percent margin of error. Um, we had over four- We had over four hundred individual unique participants throughout the project, and the online engagement reached approximately twenty-six hundred, two thousand six hundred individuals throughout the project. So, you know, given the context of the pandemic and the challenges, and really the new environment of hybrid community participation processes, we were overall quite pleased with the community participation level of the project, and we feel that we met the stated objective of the engagement process. So that concludes my informational presentation this evening, and I'll be happy to allow the Alexa and the team any questions that you want to have.
Thank you, Tim. There is no doubt your methodology was very in-depth. I think your presentation was just as qualified, and I appreciate that. When you do that kind of work, you would definitely want to be recognized and acknowledged, so let me do that on behalf of the committee. With that, I'll entertain questions from the board, I mean, from the complaining commission. So first, I'll start with Donovan Boyd, if there are any.
Thank you, Tim. Job well done. I'm very impressed. I need to get you over to my neighborhoods. You certainly need some good planning like this so we can move forward and rebuild this city, you know, one neighborhood at a time. So, good job.
Thank you.
Commissioner Abelson.
Yes. Thank you, Tim. Great presentation. Question, and I don't know, there might not be an answer to this, but are there industry standards on, like, what a good percentage of participation for these types of planning things is?
That is a, that's a good, that's a good question. I can, I can offer some kind of past experiences that we've had, and without, without kind of getting into specific numbers, I would, you know, we, we, just trying to think, you know, the percentage of kind of unique, unique individuals that we know participated is about, about seven and a half percent of the total neighborhood population. Obviously, we reached almost, or almost half of the neighborhood population participated in the, or engaged with the website or other online material. I would say that in general, that is, that is fairly in line with what was historically seen with, with participation in different communities or different neighborhoods. So in general, I would say that we did not see a big, a reduced participation rate even given the restrictions of the COVID pandemic and the mitigation efforts, so.
Great. And one other thing that I might have missed, because like Chair Strathers said, is very in-depth. But did you have statistics on how many homeowners versus renters there were in the neighborhood and how you did connecting with the renting population?
Yes, we do have some of that information. I'll be happy to share that. I mean, we can either forward that through you via Alexa, or certainly share it at the, at the public hearing. I don't have it at my fingertips at the moment, but, but we did collect some basic demographic information from survey respondents. It was obviously voluntary, so, but we did have about ninety-three to ninety-five percent of the survey respondents did, did answer the demographic questions as part of the survey, so we can certainly give you that information as well.
Would you say that you got a robust number of renters engaged in the process?
Yes, it was, it was, it was a fairly good number. I will say that the biggest challenge to renters in the process was accessing, I think it was, housing authorities properties. I know that that, that was an ongoing issue. We did, early on in the process, we did as a team, and Action St. Louis specifically conducted some coordination with the housing authority around the Renaissance Place and North Sarah development. Unfortunately, as we moved into the fall and over the winter, the COVID restrictions made that, made getting access to those properties increasingly difficult. And so that, that is probably one of the, one of the larger gaps in our, in our survey response.
All right. Thanks. No further questions.
Thank you. And I know I'm going to have Don come on in a moment. Commissioner Boaz, any questions?
No questions for me.
Thank you. Commissioner Bradley.
No questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Peoples.
No questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Goodman.
No questions.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
No questions at this time. Just want to commend you all for a job well done and excited to see what goes out of it.
Commissioner Weber.
No questions. Nice presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. With that, Don, did you have a comment or conversations to follow this up prior to?
I didn't understand what Earl just said.
Did you? Do you have any comments?
No. Did you have anything to say?
No, I mean, I think what I would add is just that the conversation about the sort of best practice metrics is not, the participation across the process is not very well documented as far as what good engagement is, to answer your question, Jake. But we do have, the minimum standards was our attempt to gather that information and start to put those metrics together. So the confidence level interval is part of that, and trying to gauge the responses or the engagement across all meetings, who is participating in those phases, and how well does it match the demographics of the neighborhood. So that's kind of where all of that is coming from. It isn't, there is not a lot of evidence to show, you know, this is good and this is bad, but that's kind of our attempt at starting to get at that.
Thank you, Cecilia. Hope the city is collecting, collecting that data as, as these plans get done.
All right. So Cecilia, I'll leave it up to you what the next course of action is for this.
Actually, Alexa can, can give you the recommendations.
Okay. I'll next.
Yep. So in summary, we want to, staff recommends a pool to conduct a presentation and public hearing at a future planning commission meeting to seek, to seek public input regarding the adoption of the North Central Vision Action Plan as a topical plan.
Very good. I'll entertain a motion.
So moved, Banton.
Second.
It's been moved, moved by Commissioner Banton, second by Commissioner Boyd. Call for vote.
Donovan Boyd.
Aye.
Commissioner Banton.
Aye.
Commissioner Boehr.
Aye.
Commissioner Brownlee. Commissioner Peoples.
Aye.
Commissioner Goodman.
Aye.
Commissioner Pfeffer.
Aye.
Commissioner Weber.
Aye.
Mr. Rother.
Aye.
Motion passes without a present voting.
Thank you, everyone.
Thanks. So we will see that at a future date at a public hearing at that point. With that, I think that calls for all of our action items. Cecilia has stepped back up and put her, taken her mask off, so it's all her now.
Thank you very much. Just go ahead and go. Yeah. Good evening, everyone. I'm going to try and keep this presentation brief. I know many of you have seen an earlier version of this strategy, but we have made some updates based on feedback and conversations with you all and with input from our new planning staff that has been hired since we last spoke with you. So, next slide. As you all know, we only have a total of seven adopted neighborhood plans. Three of those have been completed since 2017, and the other four were completed between 2000 and 2002, making the majority of our adopted plans about twenty years old. But neighborhood plans do offer an opportunity for residents to inform development and provide and guide prioritized resources in their communities. Prior to the ECODEVOT tax funding, the city hasn't had the resources to proactively engage with residents in this nature, so we've taken the time to develop a strategy on how to do so moving forward. While the COVID pandemic has thrown us for a loop, we are looking forward to moving this along. The strategy is a three-part report. The first part is called Best Practices in a Look at the Past. It provides a summary of the history of planning in St. Louis. This timeline kind of gives you that in a breadth, and it obviously goes into more detail in the report itself, including the effects of planning on African-American communities. It is important for us to understand the past in order for us to learn from it and acknowledge it and do our best to move forward and do better. Additionally, we have provided summaries of some case studies in this part of the report from cities across the U.S. and in other countries. There are two that are highlighted in this report that I'm showing here. One is a strategy from Toronto that's designed to focus on thirty-one of the neighborhoods. They have a hundred and four. To prioritize those in order to create more equity and stronger support systems where it currently does not exist. So they are prioritizing those that are, that are in the highest need. Another strategy highlighted in the report is that of Denver, Colorado, that is developed in a similar citywide initiative of their seventy-eight neighborhoods. We have seventy-nine clustering into nineteen clusters of similar size, scale, and characteristics. They are aiming to complete three clusters at once in a timeframe of about eighteen to twenty-four months with a total of eight planners. We can't simply, obviously, just rely on the best practice research and case studies to inform our strategy. We need to know that St. Louis is unique in many ways, and we need to tailor the approach to our unique circumstances and priorities. So the second report summarizes discussions with various stakeholders that were able to put on their sector leader hats and speak from the perspective of sort of, you know, their particular employment. So a philanthropic organization, a CDC, neighborhood associations, real estate, and community developers, and the list goes on. If you go to the next slide. Sorry, that was intended for you here. We focus our interviews on discussions around three topics, six topics, how we should engage the community and how organizations like theirs might be interested in being involved in the process, how to ensure that equitable processes and equitable results for all residents, the clustering of neighborhoods, if we do it, should we do it, how do we do it, choosing topics to cover, how to prioritize neighborhoods or neighborhood clusters, and of course, other discussions. It was a very organic discussion, so we did end up having conversations with each of the stakeholders about, you know, their particular sector and what was important to them. So all of this is summarized in the report to, you know, to be as transparent as possible without, you know, divulging every word that would happen throughout each of the interviews. The third and final report takes all of that information, the history, the case studies, and the best practice research, and the discussions with the stakeholders, and it provides an overview of what the neighborhood planning process is intended to look like here in St. Louis, what topics they would cover, and how we're looking to engage residents and community members. Overall, we want to guide the plans in a way that is equitable, deliberate, deliberate, and actionable. The planning process driven by the community could take anywhere from fourteen to twenty-two months. This is a very clean version of the timeline, which in the report is a little bit more digestible, but if you go to the next slide. The sausage-making-nuts-and-bolts timeline that would really take place includes tailoring, outreach strategies based on the community, feedback loops that allow residents to verify staff deliverables, and regular communication strategies. We're going to go through all of this with you at a future meeting, so this is just a sidebar for you all today, just to let you know that it isn't, you know, as clean and simple as we try and make it look to be, but, you know, there's a little bit of back and forth in trying to communicate information. So additionally, you've seen these before. The third, the third part of the report talks about public engagement. While each of the neighborhood clusters would need their own engagement strategy based on who is in the community, we have some standard focus in online engagement strategies to base those tailored strategies to. Additionally, and you've seen these before, there are chapters and topics that will be standard to each of the plans, while others that will be chosen based on the needs and the priorities of the community. It might be nice to consider covering all topics under the sun, but if we want the plans to really be deliberate and actionable, then the plans need to be focused and centered on those most priorities of the community. So again, like I said, you've seen these before, the engagement strategies on the previous slide as well, because they are a component of the adopted minimum standards for neighborhood plans that Tim Breahan was actually speaking about. So all of these things have to work together so that we can have a cohesive vision for neighborhood planning in St. Louis. Additionally, the third part of the report identifies metrics by which neighborhoods or neighborhood clusters are prioritized, are to be prioritized, metrics that indicate a neighborhood has some level of momentum to start planning from, or those that are seeing significant change or are anticipated to see significant change. Additionally, metrics that indicate a need through health impact indicators or mobility needs, and metrics that are related to economic need. Finally, we have provided a proposed map of neighborhood clusters. Clusters were initially developed, keeping in mind assets such as parks or common commercial areas, bridging corridors, common land use typologies, or pairing neighborhoods that have a higher need with those that do not, in order to build on strength and build camaraderie between neighborhoods. So our next steps are to take the month of June and July and to get public input and feedback. We will be reaching out to neighborhood organizations and community building organizations to present this information to them and let them know that it's available for public comment, and then we will refine the strategy, and we intend to begin working in the first cluster in the fall. So if you have any questions or discussion, I would be happy to engage. Alternatively, this is not an action item. I'm just, you know, we're just here to help inform you along the way and keep you engaged in this process, but I'd be happy to get feedback and discussion in email or phone call, once you guys have had time to digest more.
Thank you, Cecilia. Again, always good work. If you have any questions, please, as you said, reach out to her directly. She'll, you know, she'll engage with that. I think it's best at that point. Prior to closing, there were no other delegated items, I believe that's it for the agenda, correct?
There was one delegated item in there, and I think one of all.
Okay. Would you, in fact, that you.
Yep. There we go. It's a single family.
Let me commend Don and his team again, once again, a very informed and organized and well-produced meeting, so we thank you for that. It has, we have become really accustomed to good Zoom meetings, to good Zoom planning commission meetings, and I appreciate the commission doing all that they've done. At this point, if there are any further comments, I'll entertain any if they're open for.
One comment, Chair. Speaking of good Zoom meetings, has there been any discussion of potentially going back to in-person meetings?
I have not had any with Cecilia. The city will dictate that, I think, as much as they will. I was hoping probably by September after the, my own personal wish would be after Labor Day, but we'll leave that to the Department of Health and the city, because I know the building is open, but I don't know if they're ready for full in-body meetings yet, so. Don.
Don is not on, he called me yet, but I, I think, we've talked a little bit about possibly a hybrid situation as well, so we will keep talking through that and keep you guys posted as developments come about.
So with that, we are, our next meeting currently is scheduled for the seventh. As most of you know, Michelle will reach out and kind of ensure that those are available at that point while present. Again, Cecilia, thank you, you and your team. I'll entertain a motion to close the meeting.
No move.
It's been moved. Second. And seconded, no need for vote on that. Appreciate it, and I do see, we'll be hybrids first, Zoom in, Zoom in and in-person, so I believe there'd be some choices, options at that point. Thanks, Don. I really appreciate you responding. All right, hope you feel better, too. Thanks, everybody. Have a great, great week. Thank you.
Good night.